I'd like to call it to order the Hingham School Committee meeting, May 22, 2017, at 7:31 PM. And first item on our agenda is the approval of minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on May 8, 2017.
Second, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Questions and comments. Audience comments are always welcome as agenda items are discussed. The school committee has set aside 15 minutes on this agenda to enable members of the audience to raise questions and make comments on any matter of general concern that is not on the agenda. Individual speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Speakers are reminded that the meeting is being televised and are asked to respect the privacy rights of others. Comments against any individual are not allowed by policy 3.7.5. Does anyone have any? Okay. We'll continue. Superintendent's report. Good news.
The minutes?
We did the minutes.
We did the minutes? Okay. All right, there are a number of good news things that you have there. And...
One good news is we do have a new computer program that you're probably fiddling with.
Right, yeah.
So we'll slow down.
Well, I made the mistake of moving, of clicking on the link so you could see the minutes, but in the time that it took to do that.
Yeah.
I'm not moving to click on the link.
So we have this fabulous new visual that Dr. Gallo and Kate Doyle figured out, and this is the first time we're using it. So bear with us, because once we get this going, I think everyone will appreciate it.
The idea here was for the audience to be able to see better than simply projecting the word pages. However, we are not there. Not there yet. And Kate.
She's here. She's ready.
Making a special appearance.
I know, but how did you get back to it?
Okay, so the tabs. So that's, and then go back to present.
All right, I did present.
And I want to make a nice picture. There you go. Okay, so, all right. No good news.
All right, so one piece of good news. There's a letter in your packet that came from the two teachers that do the Quebec trip every year, French teachers at the middle school. And, you know, that trip was around the same time as the trip to Washington, and we got a lot of coverage for that, so we should have some coverage for this Quebec trip as well. Roughly two classes of students went. It was a weekend trip, multi-year event. And so congratulations to them. And you can read the details of where they went and what they did in the letter that accompanied it. So it's Ariane Swearengen and Suzanne Weiss are the middle school teachers. Also, last, at the end of last week, the middle school had their annual trip to Camp Wing, two days in a row, with different pieces of the class went each day. And that was also very successful. And while we're in the middle school, I got a lot of positive comments, verbal comments over the weekend, and emails about the success of the new format for the transition meeting they had for grades five and six that happened on Thursday night, so very well done. And a video that had been produced by Mary Dumphy and the students in the TV production class, that was a nice piece of it. And then a component of that meeting was a separate meeting for parents of special ed students. And I think by all reports, it was a very successful night, and congratulations to those folks at the middle school.
And on that sixth grade program, that was a collaboration of the principal and administration and teachers and parents all together. And then they got the students involved doing the video, and they've been working on it for a couple of months. And so it's really great, the collaboration that, and I heard really great things too from parents that went. It was a much improved transition program, so it's great for everyone working together.
And we have good news that we have a national merit finalist for the first time, and gosh, almost longer than I can remember. We have a number of semifinalists and commended students every year, but to have a finalist, one of 15,000 students, is terrific. And this is Angela Lisa White, Angela White. And Lisa White works in our mailroom and does some special office work in there, special education work in there as well. And she's going, I understand, to Brown, which is another first award in a long time. So this is Angela. This is an award that I haven't heard about before, but it's the Learner's Edge Amazing Teacher Contest. And this is the contest. Patrick Callahan, who's a phys ed teacher at the middle school. And you really need to look, read the letter that accompanied this, the letter that, of nomination, because it's a wonderful story, particularly about how he relates to students with special needs in his phys ed class and motivates them, and it keeps them involved, and how caring he is. So this is another one where it's nice to say he won an award, but it really is special when you read the letter that goes with it. And I'm actually going to send it to you folks to put on your website, because I think more people would see it there. So CPAC website, go make sure it gets on. Kindergarten enrollment update. This could be a bad idea that I clicked to this again, but anyway. I'm sorry, this one is so small, but this was the problem that we were dealing with before, and these are the slides. So we are at about 272 actually, in terms of getting most of their forms in, but an actual enrollment, if you count youngsters who might be repeating, more like 280. And we had kind of guestimated that we would be 280 to 290. So we are going to be using the fourth, the additional section of kindergarten that we put in the budget. It'll be a four-section at Plymouth River. So East School will have three sections of kindergarten, and the other four buildings will have four each. And we're solvent in terms of the number of folks who paid their tuition, or at least committed to it. The numbers of kindergarten numbers are very similar to last year. They all look, they can be under 20. Our biggest school in every category is South. It's a little over 500 students, but the total enrollment at the elementary is down by a fair number of kids, and that's a function of two things. Another large class moving to the middle school, fifth to sixth grade, and a smaller class, under 300, coming in. So when you look at that difference, I'll show you a slide in a minute, that's the total anticipated elementary enrollment. But the fact that it's down the number it is, is really a function of that in and out from large fifth grade going out and much smaller kindergarten moving in. And we are in good shape in terms of how many people at this point have completed everything and got all their forms in. That's a very big, a very big deal for us this year. I can't tell you the breakdown, because I keep forgetting to ask it, of how many people ended up paying the higher fee. That will be interesting to find out as well. All right, you're still happy.
Well, she is, magic.
Now, this is a new one, too, so now I get...
Just see that one right here.
To the other. Just out over.
Nope, you have the sign right.
I don't even ask her to take that. So this is the overall enrollment for the elementary, and you can see the 283 we've got on this slide for the kindergarten, because this does count the students who are repeating as well. And then the other enrollments are all pretty good. If you look, if you can see the average class sizes, they're really remarkable. And the majority, particularly looking at grade one, those class sizes are all between 17 and 20, which is remarkable. Grade two are all very good class sizes. In fact, our biggest class size, I think, on the whole slide, is in South School, grade five, where the average is 24.8. So 1,845, 1,885 students, that's projected. And last year, the year that we're in, last year's projection sheet for the year that we are in now was 1,946. So that's a difference of, let's see, 46 and 15, 61 fewer students than last year, this year, but last year's projection. So that's fairly significant. The middle and the high school, on the other hand, are up. The middle school slightly, and the high school, you know, 40 or so students overall. Still 92 sections, which is the number of sections that we had this year. But remember, we budgeted one more because of the kindergarten. So at Plymouth River, we have one fewer section of fifth grade and one more section of kindergarten. That kindergarten is 73 students at 18.3. So very good class sizes. And that doesn't mean every parent and every teacher will be happy with the individual class size they have, but it does mean overall, good class size is 20.5, and that's a very, very good average.
Anybody have questions on that?
Communications that I received... I put in your packet, and this can lead into a couple of introductions. I put in your packet some information that's really an attempt at a press packet for our new high school principal. And so that is in there for you reading. But I would like to introduce him today, and I know that Liza has some things to say as well, so Rick Swanson. Why don't you stand up, Rick? We won't ask you to come to the mic at the moment.
You know what? Can we do Brad first, and then we'll do Rick?
Okay. Okay, Brad.
We'll bring you back, Rick, don't worry. So student communications.
So, starting off for tomorrow will be junior awards night, which is at 7:00 PM. And then the following day is both the seniors' last day, and we're hoping that the weather is a little bit better than today, so. And as well for senior prom, which will be June 1st. And also for tomorrow's senior athletic awards night. Final exams for seniors will be Thursday, Friday, and the makeup exams will happen on Monday. Also, this Thursday is the century club banquet at the high school. And on May 30th, which is next Tuesday, will be senior awards night, 7:00 PM. And next Wednesday will be the singer-songwriter showcase at 7:00 PM at the high school. And then, as I said before, June 1st will be senior prom from 7:30 to 10:30 at Granite Lakes, followed two days later by graduation of the class of 2017. And also today, the student body gifted Dr. John McCann with a binder full of personalized thank you notes from over 1,000 students at the high school.
That's great.
Any questions or comments?
Is this the last time we're going to see you?
I will be here for the June 5 meeting.
Okay. And have you found a successor for yourself?
Currently in the process.
They're still in the process? Okay, that's fine. That's, well, if you can bring that person, if you find them by then, but we will see you at our next meeting. So, thank you. Enjoy all the awards.
I would also like to extend my congratulations to Mr. Swanson as the new principal of the high school, and wish you luck with the next generation of students. I know you'll do an incredible job.
Right. Thanks, Brad. Do we want to do Charlene first, and then go to... Do I have Melissa introduce, sir? Should we have Melissa introduce?
We're going to have Melissa introduce her new assistant.
So next is other communications, and we have another new appointee. Welcome to our Hingham Public Schools, the assistant principal from Plymouth River. And so our principal-elect for Plymouth River School, Melissa Smith, is going to introduce Charlene Fabrizio. Did I get it right? Fabrizio, okay.
So I'm happy to announce that we found a new assistant principal for Plymouth River School. Her name is Charlene Fabrizio, and she is coming to us from Needham Public Schools. I followed the same process as the principal for Plymouth River and also for Rick's position, the principal at Hingham High, and had 72 applicants. So a pretty large pool, very talented pool of candidates. Narrowed it down to 15 using a rubric. Special education was high on the rubric, and social-emotional development as well. So we interviewed six candidates, and Charlene was one of two finalists, and she came for a visit at the school. And parents, students, teachers were very impressed with her. Just to give you a little bit of her background, she does have a principal license, K-6. She also has her special education administrator license, master's in speech and language, and a license for reading specialist. And also, she's, has a lot of experience with responsive classroom, teacher evaluation system, growth mindset, and social-emotional development. So we are happy to have her on board. Thank you.
That's great. Well, welcome, Charlene, and we look forward to getting to know you, and are excited that the new generation for Plymouth River. That's great.
Thank you.
Okay, now, new business. 6.1, to introduce Richard O. Swanson as the high school principal-elect. Dot, do you want to?
Yeah, well, I included information in your packet, the cover letter that Rick submitted, his resume, which is quite impressive, as you can see, not only in terms of what he's accomplished at our high school, but his fine academic background. We talk a lot about the things that are Rick at the high school, and there are things like the green team, and of course, related to that, the federal green ribbon award, and his involvement in baseball, and related to that, the Tenochtitlan Exchange, and the whole global citizenship. Rick is well-known on the South Shore as being somewhat of an expert, one of the co-founders in terms of our global program, but he does some speaking and has visited other schools, and other schools have come to visit us, all in relation to that. So he has quite a reputation, not only in Hingham, but beyond. In fact, we can say over the world, if we count in the Tenochtitlan Exchange. So we think we followed a very comprehensive process, lots of opportunities for people who wanted to be involved to be involved. I received an extraordinary number of letters that were unsolicited. I mean, we welcomed input, but people wrote letters even though they had come to another event, and we appreciated those. We had a lot of student involvement, both in terms of coming to the forums, but also in terms of writing letters. I had probably a dozen really well-written student letters. And so that's a compliment to Rick, and it's a compliment to everybody, really, to have kids that are as articulate as our kids are, and as perceptive and good-biterous as they may be. So I'm certainly thrilled to welcome Rick. We've met a couple of times. We'll talk a bit, a little bit later this evening about the process of contracts that are individual contracts, but we've got that one final step to deal with. But other than that, Rick is already, and I, we have had some conversations already about posting for his successor as assistant principal. We'll post both inside, but also advertising schools spring, as we do for most of these openings. So Paula is excited that she can get started on the scheduling, which is a really big thing that we want to get accomplished as quickly as we can, so that's great. And all the other plans that we need to put in place to have a smooth start to our year. So, welcome, Rick.
I've been asked by the media for a statement, so I wanted to share with everyone a statement that I was going to share with them. So, Rick, congratulations on your appointment as principal. I was one of two school committee representatives on the search committee and had the privilege of participating in the full process, from evaluating all of the resumes received to interviewing the group of candidates who made the next cut. The screening committee recommended three semifinalists to the central office team to interview, and two finalists were chosen. We then made visits to both schools to learn more about the finalists from the people who know them well, department heads, teachers, administrative staff, students, parents, and community members. Finally, there were public forums held at Hingham High School to allow the candidates to meet and answer questions from members of the community. I did not personally know Rick Swanson going into this process. My children are part of his assigned students by alphabet, but fortunately, I never had to meet with him over an issue. I kept a very open mind about all of the candidates throughout the process, but by the end of the forums on May 9th, I knew that Rick would be a great choice for both Hingham High School and the Hingham community. A few things about Rick that struck me as important are the high moral values that he shares through his interactions with everyone he meets. When Rick entered teaching, he chose to go on to one of the most challenging inner-city middle schools in the country to make a difference in children's lives, and he succeeded where others had failed. The feedback on the Tenochtitlan baseball exchange program was that Rick's focus was on the global cultural experience, not on baseball. The high school students don't doubt his disciplined decisions because they have a relationship with him. He is consistent and fair, and they do not want to disappoint him. Rick has a quiet and consistent leadership style that creates communities that follow his lead. During the search process, one teacher shared that 10 years ago, their assigned committee for the NIESC review process was a disaster, and that they were dreading the process this time around. They were very pleasantly surprised with Rick's performance as chair of their committee this past year, as he kept everyone focused on the task, ran efficient meetings, and was respectful of everyone's time. The committee finished its task ahead of schedule, and the members were proud of the work they had completed. Rick has also shown impressive leadership with his green efforts over the years. His work on the green program began 10 years ago with a few kids doing some basic recycling, and has grown into hundreds of students sorting the trash at lunchtime, and 30 students digging dirt and composting at 8:00 AM each day. A very impressive feat. Rick's leadership in this area was instrumental in positioning Hingham High School to receive the National Green Ribbon Award. Next, Rick's passion for the staff, teachers, students, and education came through in many of the anecdotes that we heard during the search process. Students commented that their favorite history class was when Rick came in to teach Eisenhower for the day. On the site visit, a wide range of teachers from all subject areas came forward to express their support and respect for him as a colleague and administrator. Finally, the support staff of the school, custodials, secretarial, cafeteria, and others, authentically shared stories of how they engaged with Rick, and how he listens to their suggestions and includes them in decisions. And finally, Rick, in the community forum on May 9th, you said that your vision for Hingham High School is to continue the amazing things, of which there are many, and to have more community involvement, and to, I quote, "make it completely obvious that we are awesome and that everyone feels it when they walk through the front door," unquote. That's Rick's quote. I couldn't agree with you more with that vision. The high school principal search was a comprehensive process that allowed many people to ask a variety of questions, address a wide range of issues, and think about how Hingham Public Schools fits into the wider Hingham community. I personally found the process to be valuable, and that it allowed us to learn about other high schools and how they operate, identify the challenges they face, and how those compare to the ones we deal with in Hingham, and learn about new ideas we may want to pursue in the future. Rick, based on all these factors, I am pleased that you earned this position, and I am excited about the future of Hingham High School and the Hingham Public Schools with you as one of our key leaders. Well done. Thank you. So if you would like to join us at the microphone and make any comments, that would be great.
Sure. Thank you, Liza, and thank you, Dot, for those very kind words. I'm greatly humbled by them. Not sure I'm worthy of all that praise, but very appreciative of your kind words and grateful in your confidence in me, and to the entire school committee, all of whom played some role throughout this process that was roughly a three-month-long process. And throughout that process, I was asked many times, how's it going, and how does it feel? Do you feel like you're running for president? And it did sort of feel that way throughout a three-month campaign, but throughout, it really was a gratifying process, and I'm so grateful for the support of all the stakeholders in our school community, our students, our staff, and our senior leadership, as well as our tremendous faculty. And it's an honor and a privilege to accept this appointment. Very excited about the opportunity that lies ahead.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Rick, or want to say anything? Yeah.
Drew. Yeah, all right.
Well, thank you, Rick.
Great, thank you all so much. Thank you.
And I would like to take this opportunity to thank Christine Smith, because once again, Christine has helped us through a challenging process, and she's been there every step of the way in helping to organize, and just being there, and greeting people, and seating them, and so on. So thank you very much, and feeding me as well, so thank you back as well.
Yes, thank you, Christine, for pitching in and taking so much time. Really appreciate it. Okay, 6.2, to receive school committee, subcommittee, and liaison assignments. So everyone received in their packets the assignments, and I won't read them since people can see them here. So I received requests from people. I think I was able to accommodate majority of what people wanted, and some I had to shift around, but I think I talked to them, and they understood why. And so I think we have a good balance of managing responsibilities and bringing Michelle on into some areas that her talents will definitely contribute well. And we tried to even out chair positions and workload for everyone. And some things stay the same, and some things move around, so. And one thing I would like to comment on, on the school liaisons, that job description, we're going to, we're going to work on clarifying what that means. We had in your packet, there was some information about, from Mass DESE, about the role of the school council. And I think by just over time, we, the school committee members, you know, this liaison is meant to be two-way communication between if the schools had an issue they wanted help with, or if we had something we wanted to contribute to them, to share information with their community. That was the intent. I think it evolved into being positioned as a member of the school council, which we're not, school committees are not supposed to be. School council meetings are a good place for school committee members to go to hear information, but we'll clarify that with the principals. The school committee members should not be identified as a member of the school council. So, and I think we should, at the offsite this summer, we should have a conversation with the principals about how school committee members can be helpful to their schools without overstepping our bounds of, you know, working through the superintendent. But I think that would be a good conversation to have. But I would suggest that, you know, the past couple of years, people were scheduling school coun- school council meetings all the time, but work with the principals, see what school council meeting would be interesting information to address, but also think about a PTO meeting to go to, or if there are other events, or parents have questions, principal wants to ask a question, you know, Foster and Plymouth River both have facilities issues to address that, I'm sure Carlos and Ed will be active in communicating with those communities on those things. So depending on the school, we can all work appropriately as liaisons, but we'll better define that role so that we have the, the law in check. And school councils should be a balance of community members, parents, and teachers, and so we'll, I'll share that with the principals as well to follow up. And then for representatives to town and community committees, advisory committee, that's, that would always be the chair and the vice chair, primarily focused on the forecast meetings. We're all welcome to attend the education subcommittee meetings. That's not intended that it's just the two of us going to those meetings. And then Carlos has been doing a great job with reaching out to our legislators and others on Beacon Hill, so invite him to more, take on that role more formally. And Michelle will step in, fill Carol's shoes on Hingham Ed Foundation, and then CPAC and SNAP, Ed and I separated them, so that we could divide and conquer all of those activities. So this will be posted on the website, and we'll get to work. So, next, six point three, to discuss the 2017 school building committee appointment process. So through this, the subcommittees, I did not appoint anyone to the school building committee because I have spoken with Mary Powers, chair of the selectmen, and I have not been able to connect with Mike Puozzo, the town moderator. The school building committee is a joint appointment with the town moderator, the selectmen, and the school committee. What Mary Powers and I did agree, we thought would be a good idea, is if the school administration and school committee can provide the town moderator and the selectmen with some background information on the types of talents that we would be looking for, for that committee, because the current school building committee has architects and costs.
Costs, yeah.
Management people, and attorneys, and financial people, and a variety of skills, and.
Engineers.
Engineers. So we can share that with them, and then also, we agreed that on the talent bank application, we would ask people, everyone, even people that we know, to fill out the talent bank application, and write on it that you're interested in the school building committee, and those go into the selectmen's office, but that they would ask the selectmen's secretary to forward any of them that come in with school building committee on it to us and the town moderator and them, so that we, and the talent bank application, you basically fill out like a resume information, so we would know more details about the people that are applying for the committee, because it's a big commitment. And so that's as far as we got. So I think we can work on putting the talent bank form link onto our website, and start sharing that in the school community, but then it'll be out there in the broader community, and when I finally connect with the town moderator, make sure we're all in sync on the process. But no one has been interviewing anyone, no one's been, they haven't gotten to that part of this yet, so.
So by joint process, do you mean consensus on the whole group, or are there a certain number of people that each sub, you know, school committee, board of selectmen, town?
Eleven.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Except for, I think you have to have joint about whose chair. That has to be a joint decision.
So that's an agreement between all three.
Okay.
But ideally, all three groups will be, one individual and two groups will be working from the same pool of candidates.
But also, the, using the talent bank even provides, or application, the talent bank applicant, provides us with a form and standardization that'll help us understand who the people are that can, the candidates, so.
And what's your timeline on those appointments?
The, from the school side, we'd like to get something in place by the summer, because we want to get, working on background information, and that's why I was following up with them of seeing where they were.
So you look to have that, that, that building committee together by the summer?
Hopefully. So we want to start promoting the fact that, you know, please let people know if they want to be on that committee, or they know a good person, to fill out that talent bank application, which is on the town website, and we'll just make sure we put that on the school website as well, and then figure out, we tag it into some, the emails or weekly updates, and to get that out there.
On a related topic, I would say that last week, we got a copy, a draft copy of the report on, that is in process from the visit that MSBA made to Hingham last December. And it was really just a week's opportunity to look for errors, and with the exception of having the wrong principal. Name for Plymouth River, some woman that we didn't even know about, the principal in some other community. We found the information to be pretty, pretty accurate. That's really all it was. It was an update, didn't have any hidden messages, or I thought there might be in it some narrative as to what their impression was, but I would guess their theory is make sure the facts are right, and then they can do the narrative, but other than that, we, John and I both looked at, and there were a few minor corrections, and we made those.
Okay, great. Six point four, to discuss potential changes to the building use and bus rental fee scales. So John, two is through.
This, this topic has a, some more work to be done, of course. I mean, I'm not here to recommend any rate increases tonight, but just to sort of tee up a project, it was, it's been several years now since we sort of took a look at the overall facilities matrix and what we actually charge for rates. And, you know, since that time, we've actually had a new middle school come on board, you know, with sort of like, you know, facade field, you know, nicer auditorium, bigger space for a gym, and, you know, that's been sort of, in the old times, it was always looked at in light of, similar to the elementary schools. So, I mean, those are, that, we should probably relook at some of the rates that we're charging, and perhaps maybe even break out the middle schools, so that we come up with, you know, more competitive rates. All of our rates are well below market, and they represent value to all taxpayers and all, all residents. But, you know, some things were significantly underpriced. Another area to look at is transportation. You know, Patrick has informed me that, you know, he's, he's actually looked at comps for other companies that transport students to Boston and to other areas around, and sometimes our rates are, you know, hundreds of dollars below what, you know, somebody else would charge. So, you know, in, in that respect, he's sort of recommended, he said, "We should think about increasing a little bit." So he's not talking about extraordinary increases, but, you know, maybe something going from like one eighty to two twenty, just so that we start, remain competitive, because we do have a new fleet of buses now. It's changed since the last time we looked at this. You know, we, we're full service and operating ourselves now, along with maintenance. And then the other thing, too, we always have, you know, personnel costs will be increasing, so we want to reflect on that every single year anyhow, so that we make sure we, we, you know, stay up to date with the costs that we have, because we don't have a lot of, we don't really have overhead built into our rates, you know, which is something that maybe we should consider, you know, build a little bit of overhead into the rates, so that there'll never be a time where all of a sudden a rate increase is happening, and we haven't yet taken a vote to increase our rates to whatever the current rate is. So it's, it's sort of, those areas, really, the middle school, thinking about transportation, and, you know, thinking about the middle school new facilities that we have, and perhaps setting rates there, and then maybe looking at the category three rates, which are really those, the ones for corporations, for business enterprises, for people making money, you know, off the facilities. We're probably pretty low in that area as well. I mean, we don't want to price people out, I mean, because lots of times, those services are coming into service, our, our residents and our students, you know, so that's good. But at the same token, you know, there is, we're in tier and depreciation and other types of things happening on the equipment and the facilities that we use when we rent these. So, you know, I think we want to take a look at that. So I, I just wanted to mention that, so we sort of maybe tee this up for policy to be taking a look at some of these things over the next couple of months or so, so that, you know, we can take some action eventually.
Do it, and we want to get this done by the beginning of the school year, the next school year?
That'd be great, if possible, yeah. I would, I would like to hit it immediately.
So John, I understand the concept of the rental of, of a building, you know, people coming in to use the fields or the auditorium of the middle school. When you're talking about the buses, though, I'm not clear, because we, who are we talking about renting them to? Are we talking about clubs and teams? Because we don't, do we rent the buses out to outside?
Sometimes we do, yes.
Okay, I, I actually wasn't aware.
And then, and then we'll do field, we'll, we'll do field trips as well. You know, so, and, and when you think of the field trip, you know, it's, a lot of them are parent-paid or PTO-paid, and, you know, to, to increase it a, a little bit wouldn't, wouldn't hurt, and it would help, you know, def- defray some of the cost that it takes to operate those things.
Okay.
So it's, 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 it's field trips, but we do have outside rates as well, and maybe we should increase those a little bit, because when you look at the personnel rates, all the personnel rates have to be reconsidered, okay? But when you look at the personnel rates where they are today, they're really the same for all three categories, and perhaps on that third category, the one where it's profit or some unaffiliated party, you know, there should be more administrative charges, I think, that are associated with it. It's an idea, that's all, you know, whether, whether the policy agrees on it, I just think we should have those discussions.
Okay, competitive rates out in the marketplace, and we have new buses, so it's more reliable.
Yeah. It's, it's more reliable, and, you know, we, we are maintaining that now, and we're, we're managing all the maintenance, and, you know, the washes, and it's, actually, the program's working very, very well, and we have a lot more flexibility in the use of the buses. You know, so much so, the other things that Patrick's also looking at is comparing the costs of our athletic runs today to how much it would cost us to provide the same. And, you know, we think that there's an economic benefit analysis that basically says, "We should lease another bus, and we should take a driver in the afternoon, and then another driver, so we can do another athletic run every day." You know, we could save a couple hundred dollars per run. And there's a lot of runs there, so we're just doing.
That's worth.
You know, enough to eat up to ten thousand, perhaps, you know, throw ten thousand or fifteen thousand back into the operating pool. So those are the types of analyses we're looking at now that we're getting more comfortable with, you know, the operation, and, you know, we, we're learning, so.
Sounds like a good way to use your time.
And speaking of policy, we have a number of things, not just continuing with our wading through the, the entire policy handbook, but we have a number of things that really need to be discussed, things that, such as the student activity fund. Muddies and how they're managed, and what can go into those funds, and what can't, and so on, so that's on our agenda to review. There's a controversy out there in the medical world about what is the best way to manage EpiPen right now. We asked parents to provide EpiPens, but there's a medical, Mass Medical Society that has another thought as to how that should be managed, and it really is a dilemma, and we've had our nurses study it, and, and they have mixed feelings on which is the best way to go, and serious decisions about, and certainly because of the health and safety of, of students, but also financially, the cost of EpiPens has gone up so much, and right now, the parents are substantially bearing the cost. On the other hand, we're bearing the risk, and would be bearing some significant risk if, in fact, we went to a model that we would have EpiPens rather than the, the parents providing them, and how many do you need, and what about field trips, and all those things. So it's an important topic, and there are two or three topics like that, that are kind of new, that just need some airing before we move on, and preferably before the summer gets here, so. So you knew, policy people, we need, we need you, and as well to talk about things like this.
The EpiPen issue is that instead of, right now, any child that is prescribed with an EpiPen, you have to provide the pens to the nurse for your own child. But this proposal is that each school can have a small supply of their own pens instead of, so there might be, I don't know, six, ten, instead of fifty. And because it's the same dosage for the pen, and it's basically the same EpiPen that every child uses, and so instead of stockpiling all these, and every single year, they expire in a year, and so every single year, every family has to go and get the extra pens, and then you're getting extra pen to leave at school, and then you have to have another set at home, and the copayments have become quite high, and, or if you fortunately have the insurance to cover it, but otherwise, several hundred dollars pen. So, so that's been floated out there by the state of, that schools should do it, but then would we have to pay for the, the pens, and it's, yeah, it's.
You'd have to have two different doses with, across your school. There's a pediatric dose and adult dose.
Right, yeah.
So you're like, two different doses.
Depending on the school, yeah.
Two different ampules. Available. And they are very expensive. You're absolutely right.
But they were saying, the, the information we got said that over ninety-nine percent of parents applied EpiPens or discarded at the end of the year, and most school districts use one or few in a year, so it is a very expensive topic.
Yeah.
You can use them for your in-service training, when they expire, red and orange.
Don't sign me up for the person you're practicing.
No, we've, my family has an EpiPen holder.
From our school physician, but Department of Public Health and this Mass Medical aren't on exactly the same page, so it's waiting, waiting topic and decision.
Yeah. I just forwarded the email to you.
I saw that.
While I was thinking of it.
Okay. So policy will begin to tackle all those issues. So six point five, to discuss potential dates for summer and early fall school committee meetings. So I, Dr. Gallin and I began a draft of some dates, and so we tried to include some standard dates that we already know, and then Aileen, Cynthia and I were meeting and, as officers, and talking about the year ahead, and we came up with a new, I, concept of something to do, and June, the week of, potentially the week of June twelfth. So we'll start at the top. So I didn't put the prom down, but some people will be going to the prom, which is June first. So Saturday, June third is graduation, and we are all welcome to attend that event. So that's at the high school, hopefully on fields, and we'll all be in the gyms. And then Monday, June fifth, we have a school committee meeting, and then, so our new idea was to build on the community input we've had over several issues this year, which, as challenging as some of those meetings have been, the best feedback we've gotten is that people had a chance to participate. And so we talked about having sort of final community session for the school year to get input from people on even other issues that are on their mind. And so the way. And so the way it's written is, over the past year, we have been engaging with the Hingham community on various topics, including GPA, special education, cultural issues at the high school, and two principal searches at Hingham High School and Plymouth River School. The public input we have received has been very valuable in each of these instances, and we would appreciate feedback on other topics as we look toward planning for the future. So one of the things we've talked about this summer is working on the long-term planning, and both financial and programmatic or vision. So we talked about doing possibly two sessions, a morning one and an evening one, to accommodate as many people as possible, and just as an open session, and try not to talk about the issues we've already talked about, the GPA, the high school culture, special education. Those things aren't going away, we'll continue that conversation as we move on, but to try and see if there are other things that people want, have questions about, or want us to pay attention to, just have some open forums. So we wanted to get your thoughts on that.
Yeah, I think it's great to be... Okay. Just hearing stuff, people are talking about enrollment increasing at the high school, what does that mean for class sizes, things like that. I know that's kind of an immediate concern of some folks, so, yeah, it's great to be...
Okay.
I think one thing we need to be careful about is we need to make sure, maybe this needs to be worded a little differently, that it's not necessarily school-specific stuff, because, you know, our job isn't school-specific stuff. And that would be the principal's job.
Right.
So, you know, we need to somehow get it across that, you know, district-wide issues, preferably. You know, obviously, people are going to bring up other things, but I just think we need to be a little careful about making sure we're doing our job, not somebody else.
Well, I think we can keep a list at the meeting, and then, you know, we can answer as many questions as we can, and we can also then say, you know, you have a question about specific course, we'll send that message to that school principal, or some, so... And I don't know how many questions, probably questions we'll be able to answer. You know, when I was observing the campaign, I noticed that a lot of people had questions about our facilities, and it seemed like, wow, we've been doing a lot the last couple of years, and we're in really, we're in much better shape than, I know we were five or seven years ago, but maybe we're not getting that information out, it's hard to get it out. So I think those kinds of questions we can answer, and that's a district-wide.
You know, maybe we could find a word different from issues, because issue sort of is inviting problems, and there are always more than enough problems around, but really, I think what we also want to hear about is, what is it the people want us to discuss? What are, what are topics? What are things that they want to know more about, so that we don't get just a discussion of complaints? So if we find some other words to invite conversation about, might be helpful.
Okay.
Even as we're advertising.
Yeah. I think we could also use it to inform people what we've done in the past and what we plan to do in the future. I feel like that communication doesn't get out, I mean, we do have a community outreach at each school PTO meeting, but if those aren't very well attended, I feel like our message isn't getting out there, so it would also be a good time just to let people know what is the school committee working on currently, and, you know, do they agree with maybe the direction we want to take things?
I agree with you. I think that would take a lot of time, and it might work that we plan to do that maybe, but ask them how they want to be communicated to, so we focus on, we know we want to communicate to you more. I think we can keep figuring out how to do this, since it's the first time we've ever done it, and who knows how it'll go. But maybe that the topic could be more about, do you want emails? Do you want social media access? Do, you know, we know we need a better website. Do you have ideas about what, maybe the communication tool is the subject matter of? I don't know. So I was thinking that community outreach could lead the effort, but then we could post it as a full school committee, so that if everyone wanted to attend, to listen, that we don't have an issue with everyone being there. So, so we can work on that, we have a little bit of time on that.
We need to talk about virtual dates, is that something that you want community outreach to work on?
Yeah, we can look at dates, yeah, that, so...
Does the administration have any, do you guys have any thoughts on that week?
The one thing that week is, on Wednesday, June fourteenth, I learned about after I put the, is the CPAC monthly meeting.
Okay.
That evening.
Did we pick a date for the, sort of like, meeting, school committee, senior administration? Yet?
Not yet. No.
So we need a date for...
The offsite?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's on this list, to, it's under July.
We don't have a specific date, but we can make some ideas.
You, okay, so what is... Okay, oh, did they propose this year? I'm sorry, did they say?
So, okay, so how about if community outreach want to come back with a suggested, and then we can, do you think we should do it here, or at the high school, or another school? The Plymouth River cafeteria is very accessible, too. I found it's easy to park and get in and out of there, but, or, so we just think about where.
The distance-living center is also a really nice setup.
At where, sorry?
The distance-living center?
Oh, okay.
At the middle school.
So will our community outreach figure out
When and where?
time and place?
Yeah, I think going out is better, maybe than having people come here.
The problem with the day one would be almost anywhere, but more so here, probably, if we had a morning meeting, in terms of parking.
Right, okay. Is there one school that's better than the, than another for a day?
I think probably Plymouth East School.
East School, okay.
The least favorable ones would be South and Foster, because they're the most limited parking, but East and Plymouth River are a little better that way.
Okay.
There is also a retirement party for one of our administrators on the Thursday of that week.
Okay. So Wednesday, I'm just, I'm going down the list, so Wednesday, June fourteenth is a CPAC meeting, and...
But you could do the one, you could do a morning one on that Wednesday.
Yep, yep. So also on our list is the feedback on the Walker report, so I can work with the CPAC and Dr. Gallo on what's the most appropriate time. We've been talking about having that presentation be a special education subcommittee meeting, that Dr. Gallo can do the follow-up presentation on that. We could post it for the full school committee to be there, and then have the presentation, answer questions, identify if there's further information that people are looking for, and then at the subsequent school committee meeting, we could do an update on special ed and have the follow-through from that Walker report presentation, and then some feedback on the special ed task force as well. So the school committee presentation would be a little briefer, but the subcommittee would allow more time to get into that issue and answer everybody's questions. So that will be scheduled at some point, hopefully in June, in addition to this list. So then Monday, June nineteenth, we have a school committee meeting scheduled. Wednesday, June twenty-first is the last day of school for students in the elementary schools. Thursday, June twenty-second is the last day of school for students in the middle school and the high school, and that difference was due to the national election this year. So for, to be determined, in, well, June or July, on the to-be-determined list, charting the course with Glenn Kuchar from Mass, I did speak with him, and he would be willing to come down in June or July. Michelle, that is the, we've had him come to do the charting the course, which would count as your training, because all school committee members have to have training. And he, since he's presented to many of us frequently, he did mention that he could come and spend one-on-one time with Michelle if we wanted to do this, and then other members could come in and join in a more open discussion, and he could answer general questions of us, or we can just make the whole thing, so it's good to hear the refresher. So we can decide how to do that, but it's a June or July, so maybe once we identify some other dates, we can fit that in somewhere. And we've been talking about, so we have one school committee meeting in July and one in August, and we also talked about doing some working sessions during the week to talk about long-range planning. So Dr. Gallo was recommending July twenty-fourth for a school committee meeting. Just getting my calendar up.
Tried to choose the two days for July and August, based upon the fact that our last school committee meeting in June is the nineteenth, so a month later would be one of those two dates, actually. There were two dates I mentioned, only one of them got here, but that's okay. And, and also the fact that we really want to have a meeting before the last week in August, because that's when we really are already back in terms of the orientation, the teachers are back, all of those beginning meetings, and so if we needed some action, it would be good to have a school committee meeting before that happens, so that's what forced that, that date in August, to be not the twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
John, what was the other date that you had that didn't make it out?
In, in July, it was the seventeenth or the twenty-fourth, if you want either of those weeks.
The seventeenth is okay for me, the twenty-fourth is iffy, and then August fourteenth works well for me, so we can take a poll, and we can also, we can meet on a different day of the week if people know their schedules.
Absolutely.
All of those days work for me, so...
I'm actually away in August, so July's fine, either of those dates.
At this moment, at this moment, I'm fine with any date. Could change tomorrow.
Yeah. Ed, do you know?
Any of those three, you're fine.
I prefer the seventeenth, July as well.
It's seventy-two, right?
Yeah, okay. So we'll do July seventeen?
Okay.
And August?
August fourteenth. So, okay. So Kay, you're the only one that's, as of right now, okay. Are, Kay, are you away the whole month, or?
From the fourth to the twenty-seventh.
Oh. You are gone the whole month. So we also talked about doing, okay, so...
I'm sorry, I always just do, you usually start those a little early, is that right? At seven instead of seven thirty?
Instead of seven.
Yes, seven.
It doesn't matter to me, I'm just saying, we've got it, if we're done.
That's fine.
Early's always seven?
Better.
Okay.
In my opinion.
So if we're meeting the seventeenth... What are people's schedules like the week of July tenth, if we did a working session one of those nights?
I'm away the tenth, eleventh, and twelfth. I should be back by the night of the twelfth, but...
Now's July thirteenth.
Evening, right?
Yeah. That be good?
I'm not sure about that.
Okay.
I'm sorry, which meeting we're scheduling?
Thursday, July thirteenth, to do a working session on the long-range
Okay.
planning.
Well, but we want Ed for that, and, I mean, if we're doing it the thirteenth, and then we're meeting it again the seventeenth, is there any reason not to go out two weeks and do it on July thirty-first, that Monday?
Yeah, like, well, I can do that.
Monday, the thirty-first?
Yeah, it works, okay.
So thirteenth?
Is not happening. We're talking about Monday, the thirty-first instead.
Okay.
Seven PM again?
Yeah.
Seven AM?
Seven PM.
Seven PM.
Seven AM for you.
We're just gonna stay all day. It's gonna be a marathon.
I'm sorry, Liz, what, which, is that for again? Which meeting?
A working session?
The seventeenth, seventy.
Monday, July thirty-first?
Should I get it in?
You, okay, on that?
I think it's fair to say we're still confused about which is when.
I don't think you know what you're talking about.
Oh. On July TBD, the second bullet?
Is that with?
No, that is not, that's not with the senior leaders.
The warning, is it with them?
Oh.
Administration comes.
Right, is that the one you were talking about, with?
We want to talk about long-range, the long-range vision and the long-range financial planning.
I get you, okay, apologies.
Not televised, and no decisions to be made, just brainstorming. So for, so let's keep going, and then we'll go back. So, or we did the school committee meeting for August fourteenth. Since Kay's gonna be away all of August, could we look at the week of June twenty-sixth? See if we can schedule Glenn Kuchar, and then maybe do some combined Glenn Kuchar and working session?
For an idea, sir?
We could do Glenn a little early, have some pizza, and then, so, what are people like the week of June sixty-sixth?
Monday, the twenty-sixth?
If you look at, yeah, Monday, well, I have to give Glenn a couple of dates, I could give him that whole week and see, does anybody, or do we have preferences that week?
Anything but Friday.
Yeah, so we wouldn't do it on Friday, especially that Friday.
It's Fourth of July weekend.
We can't, oh, we'll think about that.
Yeah, Monday, the twenty-sixth, I cannot.
You cannot, okay.
What about Tuesday or Wednesday then?
Any other day, I'm free right now.
Okay. So how about?
I would even hesitate to do something on Thursday, just since it is the holiday weekend that weekend. So Tuesday or Wednesday would probably be ideal, the twenty-seventh, the twenty-eighth.
All right, let me see if those, either... All right, let me see if those, either of those dates work for him.
I'm confused.
Sorry.
I have one thing saying Monday is the 27th and the other one on the phone is the 26th. So what's we gonna get?
Monday?
It's this 26th.
It's the 26th.
Huh, isn't it? Am I crazy?
No, you're not crazy. His printed calendar says Sunday is Ju-, June 26th is a Sunday, but it is not, it's a Monday. So that is, that calendar is.
Wow.
My line never went out.
How's it doing in July?
I had a fundraiser to go Saturday, guess what? I didn't, I didn't show up. I haven't made my donations, so no problem.
Do you have this 17, 18 calendar?
Yeah. So that's fine with exception of, of Monday.
Okay, so I'll check on June 27th or 28th. And then we can combine with Glenn and get started on the working session. And then. So then let's.
The school committee administration meeting, are you gonna go back to that?
Yeah, so then we have the school committee and the administration meeting, but we're waiting to hear from the administration on what dates you guys are looking at for that offsite.
Right, we're working on first the location and then we'll.
Okay. So what I'm hoping on that school committee and administration meeting is once we know the date that, you know, we've got 30 people to schedule for that. That might be a challenge of getting everyone, but.
It's about 22, I think we count.
Well, then with us.
You know.
Oh, including us?
Yeah.
Well, 22 people is still hard. But if we can get our, some of our work done on the, the long-range vision and with the working session and our summer meetings, that we can have a better feel for where we're going. And if not everybody can attend that offsite, at least the school committee members that are there have the one message from all seven of us, so. But I hope everyone can be there. So then we'll leave August, you know, as we work through, Kay, if we need to like do a wrap-up of tightening up some of the long-range vision, we may do it when you're away, but.
So right now though, in August, the only meeting we have planned is the 14th.
Yes.
At 7:00 PM.
Yeah.
Okay.
So then Monday, August 28th is the new teacher's orientation in the morning. And then Wednesday, August 30th is convocation. And so all school committee members are invited to just attend those events and meet people. Then the first day of school, September 5th. And then the NIES accreditation site visit for the high school begins on Sunday, September 24th. And it goes through Wednesday, September 27th. And the, did you hear anything more?
No, we haven't been assigned our chair yet. But typically what happens is they arrive in the morning and the team has its own orientation meeting. But then in the afternoon that day, there are a couple of meetings. And typically, there would be a meeting with members of the school committee who might want to be there. We don't have the chair yet, so we don't have the schedule, but that's a typical expectation.
Yeah, so you can mark your calendars for that. So that's as far as we got on calendars. I'm sure that, well, in our, our next school year calendar, we'll get over the summer.
Yes, we usually do that, vote it at, at the August meeting.
Okay, so it's just the 24th?
Will we be doing a, like a Saturday morning one for, prior to budget rollout in September like we did? You know, you know.
That's right.
Rather than the entire administration, you know, just the administration and committee to kind of talk about strategic, you know, what, how we want to handle the 19 budget because.
That's the thing we've called the planning meeting.
Yep. That, you are right, John. I forgot about that one.
The 30 people is a larger strategic view, but you know, for us, I think, you know, just, so we get a good idea of where you want to go relative to rolling out the 19 budget.
So we will talk about that.
Well, we have time, but I mean, I've been thinking sometime in September, Saturday morning. It's so similar to what we did previously.
So what are people's? In the past, we've had school committee members, their Saturday mornings constrained by children's activities. And no matter what, does anyone have Saturday?
Next.
Saturday activity plans for anything? You could be doing art lessons or your own training. Yes, for September 2017.
I know I'm away September 16th.
Okay. So what about September 9th?
What is this for again?
That's Saturday morning planning meeting we do where we sit around in the middle of the room and it's brainstorming and planning.
It's planning for the coming year's budget season?
Budget year.
Okay.
Okay, that's all good. You willing to do it Sunday?
We had, we've had it a number of times Sunday because of whatever on Saturday.
So this was September 9th?
Do we want to say the 9th or the 10th for now?
I don't know if activities have started so quickly. When school begins on the 10th. Can we say 9th or 10th and then figure it out as it gets closer?
Okay.
We'll do that.
So you save it 9th and 10th?
Yeah.
One of those mornings, yeah.
Okay.
The 9th and 23rd work too. I mean, you know, as long as it's sometime in September before the budget really gets into high gear, so.
That's the weekend of the NIES visit, so you guys might be a little too busy.
Okay.
And also you begin to get into the college parent weekends and so on by the end of September.
And Eileen's away the 16th, so.
And the 17th?
Yes.
I'll be seeing, the Patriots came in New Orleans.
Oh, nice. All right. So we will retype this up. But that's good. All right.
Now, if we're gonna do the calendar though for all of next year in August, are you gonna have email when you're away in August?
Yes.
Because maybe we should make a note to email that to Kay since she's not gonna be here. We're gonna vote on the calendar for the whole year. I hate to vote on the calendar for the whole year when you can't even.
Yeah.
You should at least have been able to see it. So if we could email it to you ahead of time, just so you can have a quick look.
Yeah, that's fine, yes, okay. Can we work on it?
Rather than have you come back and say, surprise, we picked all the dates in the whole year, okay?
Can we do the summer schedule, or the, the next year's schedule for school committee meetings in July?
State of August?
Yeah, because then we'd have Kay here.
Reason not to.
Okay.
Yeah, we've got everybody here.
Okay.
That's, that's good.
Okay. Okay, 6.6 to receive notification of the appointment of Laura Patnau, our new night custodian at Hingham Middle School and Plymouth River. So welcome to Laura. And this is a shared position between the two schools. And then other items as may not reasonably known in 48 hours in advance of the meeting. So we have actually, we have two things. One is the SSEC, the South Shore Educational Collaborative Board Meeting.
There was a board meeting this past Friday and that's what, we have the typical packet. We are, good news on the board is that we had a tough year financially in 15, 16. And it's amazing how much we have recovered. So 16, 17, we have a healthy balance. And it was enough of a balance that we could contribute some significant dollars to the OPEB fund, which our collaborative has just started contributing to. So that is good news. And changed a bit the way we look at staffing vis-à-vis enrollment. And therefore, we're able to reduce some positions last year. And that is a big part of the overall budget success this year. Was not getting into a situation of staffing too much and then the enrollment didn't show up. Now we're looking at the enrollment and staffing accordingly earlier on. And so that has helped a tremendous amount, so we're pretty proud of that. And the second thing is that our, an 11th community is coming aboard. Milton is joining us. It's been a year-long process for that, but they will join us as of July 1. And the third thing that we've done this year is something we've talked about for years and, and never done. We have differentiated the, the tuitions between member communities, the members of our 11 towns now, and other students that come from other collaboratives. And there's a fair number of those. That's going to help the budget for the future. And I think saved some dollars at least for the member communities, so.
Great. And the other item is this past week, John was attending the Masbo meeting, which is the Massachusetts Association of School Business Officers, correct?
School Business Managers.
Officials. And so, so he was with his colleagues from all across the state. And so I wanted him to give us a little brief update on maybe some of the hot topics that you and your peers were talking about.
Yeah, actually, the, with the hottest topic and perhaps the most emotional one was they had the general session for Wednesday morning, or Thursday morning was really a recap of the Sandy Hook Newtown issue. And they had present the investigating officer that, you know, compiled all the data for, you know, from all the, all the parties. Also a, one of the, a teacher that had been shot. And then also a mother that lost a child. And so the sessions went from nine o'clock to 12 o'clock. Very, very emotional, but you know, such a very good review of the, the events as they took place and the facts as they know. And you know, it gets you really thinking about, you know, and a lot of good tips about, you know, how, not only how do you respond, but then how do you recover from this as well? A lot of, they brought up a lot of issues that you wouldn't necessarily, you, you wouldn't think about except for, you know, having these people tell you. You realize that there's a lot more planning that has to be done, especially in terms of recovery and, and, you know, and starting over. So that was, that got everybody sort of a little wired Thursday morning. But then, you know, then we broke for lunch. So I think at lunch, everybody was just happy to just go grab the sandwich and stuff and, and talk and stuff because it was a pretty heavy topic. And then after that, for the next couple of days, they have some like specific sessions. So, you know, and those specific sessions may be people from the operating services division, Department of Revenue speaking, they have some special education sessions. They had additional security sessions. And I'm like, I sort of, you know, with the Sandy Hook, I said, okay, I'm just going on security route on this. So, you know, I attended an MLUC session because, you know, we're looking at our plan and what our next steps are for this system now. And, you know, integrating that with the police and fire and the other departments that are pertinent to the new schools. So I attended a couple of those sessions. Then on Friday morning, they actually had Noah Berger from the Mass Budget speak. And Noah gives a very, very good description of, you know, how, where the, where the state budget gap is. And, you know, just tons of data on showing how that budget gap of a billion dollars gets made up and the individual components and stuff. And then there was also Jeff Wilsons from the DESE speaking. So he given us an update of, you know, where the DESE is and, you know, the, the issues that are getting presented now. So it is, it's always a very good update. It's a good opportunity to speak with your, your colleagues and, you know, and so. And the, the weather was great there as well. I mean, it was at the Seacrest and Falmouth.
Oh, last week during that beautiful weather.
While it was 90 degrees here, it was 70 degrees there, you know? So it was very windy and stuff, but you know, overall is a very good session.
Was there any talk about plans on Beacon Hill to tackle the Foundation Budget Review Commission?
Well, yeah, they did talk about the Foundation Budget Review. You know, in, in the context of where they talk about it, they, you know, tell us, say, you know, it's, it's underfunded. Okay, you know, it needs more special education and needs more components for the foundation budget. And then everybody, you know, in this, in this group, simply because it's all business managers and it's all money people, they say, but there is no revenue for it.
Right.
Right, so there's, you know, there's no, no, there's no inkling that revenue is coming for it, that it's going to be funded. You know, so they talk about the study and, and move on.
They just talk about the gap in the budget and?
They talk about the gap in the budget. They talk about the, the shortage of revenues. They talk about the Foundation Budget Review and what it showed. And then they say that, but there's no revenue to fund it now. So, you know, we still have our work to do. And then they go on to the next topic.
Okay. All right.
I did have one more other 48-hour.
Oh, okay.
Review-ish, topics anyways. But today we opened the bids for the high school roof.
Yes.
You know, which is very good. And we got a range of bids for this group. The high bid was $156,000 and the low bid was $86,200. And the insurance, the insurance settlement, they, they estimated this would be somewhere within the $100,000 range. So the 156 is really a high flyer. The others were like more like 105, 117, 109. So they, and the 86, so they're all right along, around that $100 mark. And, you know, for the overall project, including a designer, which is about $28,000, we had about $133,000 to work with. So this is good news, we'll be able to get the job done. The low bidder, the designer knows the low bidder, very good contractor, but we're doing, you know, additional checking on, you know, on references and making sure that, you know, they're able to do the project in our timeframe and stuff. But, you know, says that they're, they're very, very good. So the indication is that, you know, it'll be well, it'll be well within our budget because it was 28,000, 86,200, might be a little change order. You know, there, there'll be something that happens when they get up there. And then plus there were some other smaller expenses that were included in that project. So I think, you know, the, the insurance estimate probably will be pretty close to right on. So, and that project should start just about when we get out of school. It's, we told them that you can commence, you know, June 23rd. So the, the document would actually say that Monday afterwards. And should take three or four weeks to, to complete. So before August hits, we should be pretty much sealed up. So, you know, that, that was a roof issue that happened back in 16. And what happened was that EDPM roofing was, got some air under it. It looked like it was gonna take off like a sail. So it actually got sort of screwed down temporarily and sealed up. So I'm happy that we'll have that all set for the fiscal '18 here.
Great.
Fiscal '19.
No, we met to choose the designer. We haven't met to choose the contractor that'll be doing the services yet, right?
Right, yeah, so next time, next meeting, after we do the, you know, the, I get the letter from the designer, you know, recommending the contractor. I'll be back to the school commi-, at school committee on the 5th when we, when we meet again. Is it the 5th or 12th?
5th.
On the 5th when we meet again, with a recommendation to award it to this contractor.
Okay, so the long range doesn't have to be?
No, long range doesn't have to be, no. Uh, you know, we, we knew, we, we met to get the designer and we knew that we were gonna get bid. So, you know, it'll just be, it's really, the designer will write us a letter telling us about the contractor's qualifications and make a recommendation. And I will go along with that letter and I'll come back to the school committee and say, I recommend that we award to this contractor for this amount. And, and then they'll just get mobilized and get the job done. It's a small job, this is a small job. Everybody says it's a small job. The contractors went up there previously. We had a, a meeting, several of them showed up on the roof. They didn't even have to come because while it's, there's some equipment up there for these roofers, from what I understand, this is just what they do all the time, so it's a, it's a very small job. from what I understand, this is just what they do all the time, so it's a, it's a very small job.
Okay, great, thank you. Eight subcommittee and project reports. We haven't been having any meetings, but does anybody have anything they wanna report?
Absolutely. Just a couple of announcements with upcoming fundraisers for the SNAP group, the Special Lees Athletic Partnership on the South Shore. On June ninth, the Fourth Annual Social will be at South Shore Country Club. That's six to nine PM. Proceed, support the SNAP summer program. It's a twenty-five dollar charge. And you can get information and registration at southshoresnap@gmail.com. And secondly, on June nineteenth, the Hingham Rotary is sponsoring a golf tournament. All proceeds to go to the South Shore, it'll be at South Shore Country Club. And this is to benefit SNAP again. It's a one PM shotgun start. And for information and registration, it's hinghamrotarygolf.com. HinghamRotaryGolf.com. And lastly, Dr. Gallo and I attended the Hingham Cares, the Substance Abuse Preventive Coalition, last week. And the featured speakers were Plymouth County District Attorney Timothy Cruz and the Plymouth County Sheriff Joseph McDonald. And I hope I don't mispronounce the name, I'll have Dr. Gallo jump in. But to me, the, the person that I enjoy listening to most was one of our teachers, Jillian Jope, who's a, who's the Hingham High School teacher liaison to the SAD, Students Against Destructive Decisions. I thought she was terrific, she was an excellent speaker, and just had a wonderful presence.
Great, thank you. So, on that note, number nine?
No. I will make a motion to move to executive session, not to return to open session for the purpose of discussing strategies with respect to matters related to the collective bargaining agreement with HEA Unit A and the bargaining, and bargaining with non-union personnel. The public discussion of these two items might be detrimental to the committee's bargaining position.
Second. Good. All is in favor, we have to go individually.
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you.
I would suggest we return to my office.
Yep.
So that he can clean up the, keep the stuff.
Just in time, I.